Welcome to the Building Industry Association. It used to be called the Home Builders Association, Fargo-Moorehead itself. Worked with you for a long, long time now, so. Thank you Keith and Tim for being here today. We really appreciate you giving us your time and and we're also excited to hear from you and and what your plans and dreams are for being on the Cass County Commission. We are recording this. I mentioned earlier, I'm Bryce Johnson, I'm the CEO of the BIA, the Building Industry Association. I also serve as the plan administrator for the FM Home Builders Health Plan Trust. We have not renamed our health plan organization yet. And I'm also the foundation administrator for the Home Builders Care Foundation, which is our charitable arm. I have a one C three. So we operate three organizations under this roof with a staff of 12 and a couple interns. So lots of stuff happening. So thank you again, if you build out the questionnaire in advance, we appreciate that. It's really helpful for us to be able to provide that to our members. And we can still provide it if you if you didn't fill it out, but it's good for them to make an informed decision. And what we're going to do, since this is kind of a more intimate type of setting for the forum. We will ask each of you to just in two minutes to just kind of give your platform or your intentions and why individuals should vote for you. What you would like to accomplish with the Cass County Commission. So we'll, we'll keep a loose timer, but I mean, since Jim Capitan wasn't able to make it today, it gives us a little more flexibility to to give you a little more time. So but just we're asking to be respectful, so everybody gets to respond to questions and such. So if you do get up to a little past the timing point, Elizabeth. Yeah, she has her red card for stop.
Just in case.
Yeah. Yeah. So anyway, but yeah.
How many times was I with that card?
Yeah.
So.
Yellow first.
Yellow.
Left.
Yeah. Finish here. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so.
For me, we used to have like 20 of the red cards. So, Elizabeth. So anyway, we will have about 40 minutes for Q and A after everything's said and done. So. But and we do, and we're asking for questions for for your answers to be around a minute or so. But again, we can be a little loose today on that. And then we'll give you an opportunity for closing statements as well, as well, which a minute for that. So with that, thank you again for being here and thanks to Chad and John for joining us. Let's just do a quick introduction. You with your company and how you were involved with the I A over the years.
It'll take 14 minutes.
Yeah. Yeah.
Recently retired from my company I had for about thirty eight, thirty nine years and then starting a little company. Thank Fargo Resonant and I've had just about every position here at Home Builders in my tenure between president and almost every one of the committees and I'm considered a senior life director. I don't know what benefit that gets me, I still have to pay for it, I don't get a discount. But anyway.
All right, thank you for being here.
Chad Malloy, I work with Gate City Bank, been there for 28 years, some mortgage loans for that time. And I'm on the public issues committee here at Home Builders.
Wonderful. And I'm Elizabeth Cozal with the BIA, I'm the education and public affairs specialist here.
All right, and Elliot just confirmed he is a sick kid, so he might be able to make it. We had another home builder coming, but he's not going to get to make it. So with that, what I would like to do, we have a contested race in District Five. And Keith is here, so Keith, would you give us a two-minute synopsis of your plans, dreams and intentions? And a little bit about yourself, if we prefer history or whatever.
Yeah, I come from, born and raised and pretty much my whole life outside Fargo-Mapelton, between Mapleton and Castle. But we were a dairy farm. And they only time I did out of the county was when I went to U N D to go to school, grad school, and then I ended up teaching in Oregon for a period of time, a couple of years. Then I returned to the farm and I started a 40-year teaching career at Maple Valley. So my roots are solidly planted in Cass County. I decided to pursue going after the commission position because the main impetus came from people in the county. Twenty years ago plus, a group in Castle then asked me about a time commitment. They wanted me to try to do that and I checked with a couple of commissioners and I found out the time would be 20 to 25 hours a week. So when you're teaching school, I have 50 cows, I have young girls, I coach basketball and football. That's not going to pay justice to the job. Now I have the opportunity because my time schedule is different. I'm a part-time adjuster and I own cows, but I don't take care of them. So this time, when the same group, that group of them in Cass County, they wanted me to go ahead. And so the issues facing the commission, I think the two things, economic growth and the pressure on the property taxes. And you know, when you're living all the country out there, the roads come into being. So that's kind of, and those three are all tangled together. Taxes and services, economic growth and the roads that connect the city with the rural area.
All right, thank you. Tim, you're running on a post, Tim Blackwell. Want to kind of do a similar.
Yeah, I grew up in a small community called Forbes, North Dakota, it's right on the North Dakota, South Dakota border, south of Jamestown. The city has a population of 41, so clearly has different issues, much like we we encounter in parts of Cass County. I mean, that's one of the things that I'm excited about is bridging the needs of both rural and Cass. I mean, you know, we would see it in the legislature where people didn't know the difference between soybeans and jelly beans, between durden cattle and durden wheat. And I think you need someone with a balance of experiences that have been involved, been engaged and have the pulse on a variety of issues. And to that end, I've tried to meet with the various department heads so far, try to meet with about two a week. So it's not too much, so I can kind of absorb all of that. I've been attending commission meetings with the hope that if I'm elected, that on day one, I would be better prepared to serve. As far as things I've done in the past, I spent 18 years in the state senate where I chaired the education agriculture, international resources committees. I chaired council state governments Midwest, which is 81 million people. chaired the Midwest Higher Education Compact, which is 4.2 million college students. But I try to be very actively engaged in community, I'm on the board of the Homer and Addle Shelter, Northern Plazette the Institute Church Shelter. I've been involved in more than 300 community-type organization years. Just for the record, I'm not 300 years old. But I really think that that's important. This is part of my long-term plan that I developed when I was in my twenties, that I would run through the legislature. And when I became older, then I would do local things, so I would have to travel with this market in those lovely winters that we have. So this is playing hopefully that way. And I'm not sure, we're probably going to get into our platform issues later or not.
Yeah.
Because I ran out of time, so.
Oh, okay, yeah, we'll be, we can ask questions, we can digress or whatever. All right, so well, thank you for that. And I just a heads up, we will probably have another candidate joining us late, so. So with that, and then Chad and John, if you guys or Elizabeth, if you have questions or things, just interject, but just to get started, I really from a housing perspective, we've had this metro regional study that's been out there now, I think it's going on two years that the study was conducted. And recently they had, they met and they have an MOU evolving, so jurisdictions will submit for a representative on task force. They'll come together, but it's it's a memorandum, but understanding so that jurisdiction commits and asks for some consistently attending. So we can address why the product for the missing middle isn't being produced. And we've been begging everybody involved to say, we can tell you if, let's just get a group of developers in the room and let's have a conversations about why, you know, the challenges of why they're not producing that product. They are producing according to the market. But what the market is driving and what people will buy and can afford. And so it's very hard to build a product and there's high risk if that the buyer can't afford to buy. So but anyway, that meeting hasn't happened yet, we've been told many times, just just wait until we get this agreement going and it's, you know, we're almost two years down the road. So we'd like to know just your feelings on housing, the housing needs, housing incentives in general, how that plays in, and that might change dramatically after the November election with the property tax. If the measure four is approval, so. But let's start with Tim first, just on your thoughts. What, how do you feel about incentives for housing and kind of with the way the state of the fairness is right now with housing availability in homeownership?
Well, I first want to point out that I did fill out the form in case somebody wants to go and put that up online or probably make it available to people if they want to request it from your office. But to me, homeownership is one of the great things that can happen in America or the United States. You know, I think about my house and really at this point, the only way I want to leave in my house is feet first when I'm gone. You know, it just, I just love that sanctuary that provides for me at the end of a long day. And I think that's a goal of many people, not anybody, because you get to a certain point in your life where you're looking for somebody else to mow your lawn or do some of those things. I think some of the incentives that we've had for homeownership have worked very well and should continue. So I don't see in terms of the homeownership portion of it. You know, throw it out the baby with the bathwater now. All bets on everything are off if measure four passes. I mean, we are creating from new cloth there and you can't even bar the door on what could happen. And people don't realize that, for example, if you own, have a farm, a house on a farm, they're not getting taxed and that more than 50% of their income is derived from agricultural enterprises. If measure four goes away, they gotta pay the bills some way or another. So we're in really a wild, you know, interesting time. One of the things I can bring to it, I mean, at one time, I probably in terms of proper tax stuff, I do, there was only like, I was in the top five in the state of North Dakota, I'm not top five anymore because I've been away for a while. But I understand it pretty, pretty well and some of the levers that go with it. And I sponsored the bill that lowered it down to 60 mils across the state. So that's state tax orders for taxpayers, billies are dollars, but they're a dorm room.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
So a year and a half, two years ago, I attended that Metro COG meeting. I was telling Elizabeth earlier, it was very, very interesting because of the challenges that it brought forward. David Pickorn asked a couple of different pertinent questions about, you know, the type, what you referred to there, the type of homes that there, we need. And it wasn't necessarily what he said what developers would envision, because developers, I understand enough about economics because it's trying to make the most money they can, thus they, you know, bear away. And that might not build the kind of homes. So those 16,000 jobs have to be, you know, what are the people that are going to be, what are those jobs? What is the income or the wages of those people so that what can they can afford? So when you talk about that, that's exactly what's going on. Is that it has to be studied pretty closely. And I certainly wish that what you told about that mission getting together, they need to because the needs of housing with the diversion limiting what space Fargo's got is very, very important.
Yeah.
Surprised it hasn't, because if that happens, there's going to be some serious impacts in Fargo or in West Fargo.
Well, and yes, the building industry is an economic engine, we're a job creator too. So if housing in general, the the construction industry slows down, revenue slows in these different jurisdictions too, because of all the fees and that they collect as as well as the economic activity that's generation, generated from each home built. And a family moving into that home and they're putting kids in schools and they're shopping and, you know, I mean, it's, it reverberates all the way out regionally, so it is, it's a big concern. And like I said, kind of what you're saying is the market is driven by what's being purchased. So if you can't afford, they're not building homes in the range of in entry level. I mean, it's very hard to build that entry level range, it's just not feasible. It's high risk, so there are very few that can build in that range. And then, yeah, all the challenges that the buyer sees. The 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 down payment, the interest rates are slightly moving now. So yeah, there is a lot of, and factors, workforce, wages and skilled workforce shortage and so.
I gotta put a plug in, I sit on the Cass Clay Community Land Trust. And if you haven't had a chance to learn anything about that, it's, 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 it was created about two, three years ago on a need to help. Initially, the mission was probably workforce, to help with workforce housing and help people get into homes. So we, we will subsidize based on area median income levels. A lot of times we will essentially help with the down payment. And the house stays in the land trust, the purchaser gets to keep a portion of the increased equity in the home. They have the mortgage on the house. It's a great concept. Minnesota, as you might guess, has quite a few more programs and currently right now in Minnesota, we've got, in Moorehead, we've got two six bedroom homes we're building because of the need of a lot of, some of these homes are multi-generational too. But we're trying to help fill a little bit of that gap, but I can tell you, I've lived in my house over by Claire Barton for 48 years. We haven't helped to help keep the school kids in the schools. But just what I've seen, I've had two houses, my, the house next to me just sold. And these are, I mean, these are older, three, three to four bedroom, two bath type houses. It sold for $460,000 in an old neighborhood. And the one behind us now, a nice one-story, I was just looking at it with a lady this morning, she's looking for a place for her kids. There, and that's a one-story. And it's three-bedroom, two baths. And it's was listed at $469,000. And this is old stock. You know, and and it's not too many years ago when my youngest son got married, they bought a Davenport house out of West Fargo for $215,000. That same house now, I think a hundred years ago, that wouldn't be Jeff, but that same house now is about 315. So I mean, I, I, it is when you, it's, it's a tough nut to crack of how you do this. And to try to find methods you know, with, with, you know, with the land trusts opportunities and trying to find methods to get people into ownership. Even if I attended that seminar last fall and the seminar was down Minneapolis, Minnesota has quite a few land trusts. And a lot of the, what we consider apartment buildings have turned to condos. And to get people into ownership, so they're building some equity. So maybe at some point when they've got some equity built up, they'll move, you know, out of that. So I mean, it's, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough cycle out there right now.
Were you wondering if the county can work with the Community Land Trust at all?
Well, we get, we get properties from all over. I mean, you know, sometimes we get, we get a couple that are then referred to us by the banks. Sometimes if and now we're trying to get owner, like if you, if an owner comes to you looking to get in, that if you don't see that they have a problem with probably that sometimes we get referred, that like land trust will be referred from the banks. And.
So the properties and disrepair and the people want to get out of it.
No, not so much even disrepair, I mean, we, no, no, this is, it just depends on whether they're trying to get into a house and they can't quite make it. A good phase that we were trying to get into is that the owner initiated or the buyer initiated program, so they'll come to us. And if they qualify, they help with assistance, so.
Hello, I apologize for being late.
No, crazy.
So would you describe and compare to what Tim opened up with, the passion that he talked about getting into his home? And I would say when you were a young man, prices that you mentioned there.
Thirty-one thousand. And a half percent.
And that's exactly what we're talking about with these in some range housing events.
Yeah.
You're not going to put him into a, at those prices that you mentioned, 400 and some thousand when you start just working like.
I think we're going to, you know, see a real boom. The diversion is complete and certified in terms of not all the you know, how it filters, I'll say down, filters across. Because businesses and business owners are going to feel much more comfortable in building and investing in the metro area because there's that diversion protection. And once it gets certified, you know, some of those land or those policy values are going to go up pretty quick, I think even for a little while because there'll be more pressure on it. You know, on one hand, we'll probably lose some of the diversion work, but on the other hand, you'll have an increase that will tilt up because of that value. On the other hand too, I mean, let's not forget that some of the reason why certain housing stocks are less appealing is because they're spending what, $60 million on mandatory flood insurance right now? And you know, that's, you know, for some people, that's a, you know, just like, you know, when they say, here's what we want, here's what we won't take at all. That's for some, it's like, we won't touch that at all because we don't want to have to pay that. We don't want to risk even if we have our house obliterated with a flood, we don't want to have to deal with that whole mess of trying to build back.
Yeah. The flood proof basement requirements add a ton in expense to the cost of the home, rebar, fill, different things.
Yeah. It all makes difference, you always have a planning commission back. I got over 98, but you know, just the, you know, what, what the flood stage was considered then versus now dramatically different.
Yeah, so I'm going to circle back then and welcome Joel, thanks for being here and no worries. We're, what I'm going to do is I wanted to ask one question that I'd like golf review to address. And we're just, we're keeping the responses to one minute, is that right?
Yeah, a little over.
Okay, and then I'm going to circle back and have you introduce yourself and you get two minutes to do that. But we're, we're on a topic about housing needs right now and missing middle and the product that isn't being produced in the county. And the challenge is to be able to produce that product, the missing middle. Wanting to get people into homeownership, but even into just housing, the multi-family and affordable rents or if it's townhomes, twin homes. Twin home on grade right now is over $500,000 per twin home that's on the grade right now. That's just amazing to me.
That's probably going to be a little bit upper level though.
It is, but still, it's interesting to see that. So but the question is, from a county perspective, how can that county, do you see any do you envision anything in terms of the county being able to assist in housing and in terms of if it's incentives or or addressing certain populations? And there are in that mix, there's the homelessness issue. Some of the, in that homelessness category are people who are employable, they just need the housing. There are others who are not employable, that they need special services and housing and you know, so that that's a whole different thing. This is about getting either those that are homeless into something, some type of housing and or, and then eventually getting into homeownership. So how can that county assist? And I'll have Keith address then Tim and then Joel, so Keith.
We can continue doing what they're doing with, in partnership with cities is the kind of incentives that they have in place with tax rebates and you know, abatements and things like that. But that brings in the bigger picture of the challenge with that is that if you've got that kind of, you know, property incentive that's going to encourage the first time home buyers in that area, then the services that are going to be provided that are necessary for a growing economy situation. So that's going to put more pressure on the ones that are there. So those things have to be well thought of, well planned, scrutinized. You can't have them too long because of the impact on the whole. So it really is a, also catch 22 that you have to be very aware of. It's going to force the counties to really make hard decisions and careful decisions.
Yeah.
When you talk about incentives.
I was going to say, and we've already kind of talked about measure four, that the whole world may, or North Dakota may have a world of change, measure four, so. So, Tim.
In terms of incentives, I think they work, I think, you know, there's different kinds of incentives. Some are probably overdone, you know, I still have to be convinced that a 15 or 20-year incentive is the right thing for us to do.
Oh, right, yeah. So different, different things, the property tax assumption for new construction, new residential.
Two-year deal, I mean, I think that has shown to work and it helps people, as we talked about earlier, get their foot in the door, because generally once they get their foot in the door, they can kind of grind things forward and make the payment and do all those things. And as long as they don't get hit with something catastrophic or over the top. I would like to see if the county could be a leader in a multi-county wide, you know, between Cass and Clay County competing to kind of try to balance some of those numbers out between the counties and the various political subdivisions. Because I don't want them also trying to outbeat each other. And that doesn't seem to work very well, then then they get upside down in other ways. So I miss out.
Okay, sorry, okay, Joel.
Great, yeah, no, I, again, I appreciate the time. Biggest thing for me is, I agree, incentives when utilized correctly and especially in the short term is the right thing to do. People don't want to hand out, most people just need a little help. And when we're talking about housing, those are the things that are critical to keeping people here in our communities, retaining people, but also attracting people. And if they can't find a place to live that's affordable, they're not going to come. I mean, that's the bottom line, I have two young daughters that are in college right now, they're going to make some tough decisions. And whether it's stay here or go out where there is more of an ability to find work. And whether it's stay here or go out where there is more of an ability to find work, to find affordable housing. And I want them to stay here. And, you know, one of the things that you were talking about was the issue of homelessness. Uh, right now, I think we've, one, we've, I've served on several committees over the last thirty years in homelessness. Um, and, uh, one of the things I found is that there's no silver bullet. But housing is critical to finding ways to deal with issues that are broader than just, you know, why are they homeless? Right?
Right.
But we gotta get them housed. And right now we're working on some, some different measures. The one that really has been, uh, over the last several weeks. Uh, some private investors will look at really expanding that voucher program. To really deal with that issue as well.
Thank you. Um, we, uh, just to circle back, would you want to do a quick introduction and why you're running for position?
And we're really good at it, but.
Everybody knows you two. Joe Orville. No, my name is Joel Bell. I've, uh, I've been in Farnham in this community and, and grew up, uh, I've been here for over thirty years. College at N D S U, grew up in a, a small farm in Trail County. Outside of Trail Springs and went to high school and graduated and then N D S U and the opportunity to be, wrestle for the Bison and then moved on to, uh, we left the area actually for three years, worked for Target Source briefly and then recognized that one to come home. And, uh, it's been a great return. Um, started law enforcement in nineteen ninety-seven, was there for twenty years. Worked on a number of different boards and maybe still serve on five boards right now. Um, I truly love the opportunity to serve my community. After my law enforcement days, I'm the district director of the Park District for three years. And now I work with Sanford Health, um, doing, um, business advancement and partnerships. And it's been, it, it's been interesting. Because part of my job with Sanford is, uh, is I, I get to go out and, and give some money to some very worthy causes. Uh, so I can say now that, uh, for twenty-three years I didn't make anybody happy and now I'm finally making a few.
Yeah.
Um, but it's been a blessing. Um, but again, the reason I'm running is really, I mentioned really my daughter. I want this place, this community, this area, this region to be a place where they want to be, where they want to live, maybe want to raise their kids. And selfish of me, I want to keep them here, but I also have a great pride in my community and I think this is a way for me to serve.
All right. Thank you. Um, I don't, you tell me if we've answered this. How would, if measure four does pass, by the way, thank you. And we're excited that you were able to make it. So thank you for that. Um, if it does pass. What does the county, where, where does that put the county in terms of limo until the state legislature meets or? Um, and what, what's going to be in your mind, the first thing that they need to address? So jump to Tim on this one and then go down the line, speak it kind of routine.
If they haven't already done, I don't know if they have formally in any way. But, you know, you, you almost have to do like a tabletop exercise that businesses do for the worst case scenario. If this happens. You know, if we have a derailment in our community of this kind of gas, what do we do? I mean, and that's kind of what we have to look at. On day one after the election, if it hasn't been done already, because you as a leader in whatever political subdivisions, you ought to be someone who's at the table helping make those decisions. Uh, so that you aren't being held victim and have to play defense all the time. Because there's, I mean, there's more ways that you can tax people in different ways. You know, one of my friends in the legislature, you know, commented on Facebook and I usually don't reply. But he said, well, why don't we just change the, you know, the vehicle registration from eighty dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars at that point you're out of. Only if you did that, you have to register thirty-one million cars to make up the difference. You know, three point one billion dollars. I don't care where you are. That's still a lot of money.
Yeah.
Even at the federal level. So that is a big chunk of money that has to be replaced. Now, some people don't want to want, you know, that's part of the purpose, I think, for measure four is that they have to make those decisions that are going to blow past the stop sign. But when you look at the state's budget, for instance, where we get a lot of money from, hairy dog money, other money. Roughly ninety percent of that either goes to education, K twelve schools or the human services. And there's only ten percent and that, you know, includes prisons and all the other stuff in that ten percent. There are, I mean, there are constitutionally mandated things that are happening with that property tax. So you have to be ready. I mean, I have my own list of maybe you could do this or that. I've already contacted one of the governors, that's pretty, tell us where the governor said, if you have, when you form a task force, I would love to be on that task force. Got it?
All right, Joel?
Uh, you know, again, as I think we all recognize, if that passes, it's, it's not just a game changer. It's a devastating factor for all uh, local entities and really takes away really local government. And, uh, like mentioned, uh, really the biggest one that will affect the, to their kids. New tax borders are kicking off schools. Uh, they will not have a voice. And whether you like our school board or not, um, the bottom line is where their decisions for, for us at a local level need to stay here. I think to answer your question, at the end of the day, we need to figure out a way to sit down with our legislators and really develop plan. Um, because, and it, and it can't wait till after it passes. There has to be some work done today. And unfortunately it's not being done.
Thank you. Keith?
The whole situation with the property taxes, I said that from day one is that you know, taking advantage of a, a feeling that you'd hit a frightful where you can't afford to pay the property tax anymore. It was impacted on people that it was really getting to be pretty bad. My daughter was one of them. The assessment under the house I was born and raised in went up fifty percent, forty-seven percent. And I said, it's got to be a mistake. No one assessed her total. It's worth that. Because of her divorce, she had to refinance. But if your real estate grazers came out there, put it very much close to what the original, you know, assessed value was. True and full value. So took phone calls to get that done. And it shouldn't be that way. It, and how we're going to respond, these two guys both said is last night, the conversation. A couple of them, and they're really good. They didn't know the impact is they figured that the sales tax could go up. They didn't realize it's a state sales tax. It's already enforced. So where's this one point three more billion dollars that's going to go into the local entities? You've got a major problem. And so, but Joel said about get ahead of the game and get there. And there already are contingency plans of other entities, the story of Western North Dakota. The school board and the city council both have artificially gone up the last two years. They aren't spending more money. But they're bankrupt because rumor is that the state will fund at the current level. And they're above what they need. Their taxes are going up. Only because they're looking ahead. We're concerned or we're sure this is going to pass. We want to be ready to get state money in here to be able to. And if that's.
What you gotta look at is what happened in the boat in Castleton for central.
Exactly.
Central.
That was a witness test.
I mean, I mean, this is, this is building maintenance. They're, they're looking at about. I, I mean, this is not anything else. This is just maintaining the properties that they have and it soundly got defeated. And you kind of wonder, are, are people just saying that they're not going to pay anymore? And if that's the case, I mean, um, watching the superintendent on the news last night, I mean, you can, if you, there's some of this, it's, it's common sense. I mean, fortunately, I mean, I don't know what twenty, they wanted to raise it to twenty mils if I remember correctly. I don't know what that amounts to say on a property. But I mean, my point is.
Twenty, twenty mils on my house, you know, because I'm in the gas school district.
Okay, how much?
Twenty mils.
Yeah.
About four hundred and some dollars. Just on the house.
So four hundred more dollars?
Yeah.
A, a year?
Yeah. The, my plan was to build a new school, the middle school type situation.
Yeah.
That was, uh, sixty-some mils. It would have cost thirty-some million. I'm sitting at the meeting, took my phone. I know a lot of figure of property taxes. It was nine hundred and seventy-five bucks just for my house and I have farmland.
I mean, there's a, there's a side of me.
Some situations.
You know, when you're in the building business, there's there's, there's properties that, and churches are one that never planned for. And, and the school district, I mean, it's too bad that they've gotten to this point. I mean, deferred maintenance. By the time you, if you keep deferring something, they, they monitor maintenance, you have to do usually more than if you figured out how to handle it in the first place. And so, but it does reflect an attitude of the people that if this measure four was to pass. And I don't think I've heard a good argument or a good explanation of where the money's coming from that it currently generates. I mean, where's, where's that money going to get made up? That if, you know, and.
Kim, you wanted to.
Just a couple things on that, if I, my, um, as I stated, I served for eighteen years in the state education committee and you can rest assured, there are people then and there will be people now and in the future that. When it comes to like schools, they want to pick prom colors. They want to get that detail. You're, you're throwing away local control. If measure four passed because, you know, it's the golden rule, who has you, you know, or she who has the goal rules and they're just going to run it. And if you are in some of these smaller communities, it'll be tough. It resolves the problem. I think Parko made a tactical mistake by putting all these measures on the ballot and because it's just kind of, you know, it's like showing people there's this kind of what people are perceiving as a money grab at the end here. But also they haven't answered the question, what, since, uh, nineteen ninety-eight, there was two hundred and thirty-five school districts. Now there's about a hundred and seventy. If you have that same attrition rate where they merged, combined or closed. What happens to those dollars that are guaranteed? Because some of those are like four was what split into like five different school districts. How will that manage? No one's answered that part of the question. And, you know, I hope people, you know, do the homestead tax credit when they're low income because that, that does matter. Uh, talking to the assessor when I met with, with him, you know, they're, they've gotten mostly caught up on assessing properties that, you know, in the county. So now hopefully that'll be a little more stable and won't get so, so, uh, wonky out of place. But there's just a whole lot of things that are playing into this. But it does totally just, you, you eliminate now. You have people that are in Bismarck that were elected by in some cases eighteen hundred people that are going to decide how much everybody should get.
So I think my point was always as that is, at the end of the day with schools, um, you know, one of the reasons we are trying to retain people, one of the ways we do retain people is we have great schools. And we have great schools across the state. And if this happens, it will degrade our quality of our schools. And it'll take away that local control and the passion people have for giving back to their schools. I think this is, this is really a game changer.
Yeah, it's very, very worrisome. Uh, but like you said, we just are hoping voters educate themselves before they vote, but.
Because what would happen, sorry, what would happen to your organization if somebody said seven percent sales tax on those homes?
Oh. Yeah, well, it wouldn't be our.
I don't think people ever mentioned that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be our organization. That would be the community in the region in terms of the economic impact that would have for us.
Yeah.
Yeah. And homeownership.
I can't afford it now.
Yeah, homeownership, which is so critical to any community because they're reinvesting in their community constantly when you own your home. And you're staying and you're committed and your kids are going to school here. Um, I can't even imagine the impacts of what that could be. So, um, so one quick thing, I have three questions I want to get to before everybody has to leave. Um, and you mentioned to pre, our appraisals, um, we don't always have the greatest relationship with appraisals in the building industry or appraisers. So we try, we, we work really hard, but there's, there's a lot of, um, conflict with that. So just so you know, it's, it's, it's not easy for anybody. Um, we, we end up with, um, challenges with comparables in new construction. And, and, um, the restrictions that have evolved over the years between banks and appraisals. So it's, it's a, that's a, that's a tough one when you mention.
They always blame the bankers.
Yeah, no, 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 I, the regulatory.
The crisis is the opposite. Dealing with the county's appraiser as to the example. And I've done that on two different occasions that during the township.
Yeah.
Because after the flood of ninety-seven and it was needed to go and equalize. But after that flood, there were people that lost their homes, basements and that. And then the price, the evaluation assessed value true to go. It went up forty-seven percent. Let's say mine survived the flood. I can understand.
Yeah.
Housing values, recite people want to move out. I could see my home, the neighbor's home, you know, more newly built, twenty years old. But it wasn't, that's this whole fairness and that's what property taxes are in trouble. It's the fair part. You've got to put in everything into the equation. Like older people that want to stay on their, in their farm home and they're on a fixed income now because the land got. And now they are in trouble. You can go through in small towns, city, older people being, those have to be exempt. They have to be addressed.
Yeah.
But it's going to take time and effort. It's not like.
Yeah. And it, and I should rephrase it. It's not, it's not, there's not contention. What I'm saying is that everybody's got a hard job. Um, because there is regulatory and compliance is coming into play. So appraisals, it's, appraisers are having a harder time doing their jobs. Um, because of some of the regulatory, it really affects single family construction. Um, what it costs to build that home and then what their appraised value and, um, so, and then for an individual to qualify for a loan for that home. So, no, we, we get it.
Well, and then on your point, then your districts are in rural. For me to go build in a rural area where they want to use comparables, it is extremely, and that's why you don't see a lot of, you know, new construction in, in rural areas. It's, it's just tough. From the banker's standpoint, it's tough for them to come, or to come up with.
Well, and we're taking the risk of doing a loan on this house.
Yeah.
We don't know. The question is finding out what that house will resell for if, if we get it back and we have to sell it. And when there's nothing to compare it to, because there are no new construction in rural areas. And most of the time rural areas are, depending upon gas prices, are more or less attractive. When gas prices are cheap, you see more people moving on to the country. Because I'll, I'll commute and then gas prices go up and I'm not doing that anymore.
Right.
I mean, yeah, that's a, that's an argument we, we consistently have. I mean, I, I it's work for a gentleman up in Mayville. And it was a large, large even remodel. I mean, ambition and to try to get, he, he luckily had some pockets. But I mean, still we had trouble with appraised values.
And we have that discussion with contractors all the time or clients all the time. The cost is not what the value is. Right. And it seems like more and more new construction, the costs and inflation are outpacing what maybe even the market value is appreciating. And, and then we also have the other side of it. Incomes are not keeping up with either one of those.
Right.
And so there's a gap and it's, it's getting worse and worse. The toughest thing right now for clients that I see coming in is one, having enough money to qualify and then two, having the cash. So the amount of people that are qualifying for an entry level home are getting squeezed and squeezed. I think we also have a lot of people that, um, are holding on to their three percent and better homes that are the entry level stock that they don't want to give up that rate. They're either.
With, with what you normally turn so you get somebody else in those.
Right. And they're like, well, I, we would like to move, but we just can't give up our three percent.
Right.
You know?
But I think, I think it's human nature, and that's why I didn't say this, that the only fair tax is one I don't pay.
Right.
Yeah. And we would hear that constantly. I mean, we would have people, we would lower at the state level, we would lower the income tax and we'd have people complaining because you know, we lowered a half percent and they were, well, I didn't, you know, get any benefit from that. It's like, you're not paying any.
Right.
So, yeah, you're not going to get any. So it's just.
Um, okay. Well, just getting back to another question, um, ten years from now. Ten years from now, what do you think CAS County Commission is gonna be facing? Um, what, what issue that they're dealing with today as a commission, what will they be facing ten years from now? Um, and we'll start with Joel.
Sure, uh, I think that, you know, the bigger issue we're gonna continue to face until we figure out the, uh, a solution. Uh, one workforce, um, looking at the numbers and the for, and the, and really the forecast that they've developed in Bismarck over the next twenty years. It's not looking good. And so I have said from the beginning, really all of our, our entities have to provide some level of influence, um, interest in trying to continue to attract great people here. And I think we, we've seen some of those things that are happening, but we need to invest more. And I think it, it is one of those critical, critical issues that I think in ten years is still gonna be critical. And we need to continue to make that one of the top things that we look at from city level, county level, state level. Because again, the forecasts don't look good, so.
Thank you. Keith?
Yeah, workforce and the whole situation of economic growth and the challenges to realize the positive and the negative aspects of it. Those things are not gonna change. I foresee ten years from now Fargo still being the economic engine that is. It's got too many advantages now, three colleges, you know, it, it's gonna attract people, I think, so. But that brings in the challenges of doing it in the right way without putting pressure on the existing institutions that are there. It, it's going to be, it's gonna be difficult. More people, more problems.
I have four things, um, two of which were organization workforce, economic development, I think in the area of economic development, the county has to realize that we can't be all things to all people. There's too much redundancies in economic development and workforce. And if we're gonna do something, we should maybe look and say, who can we, you know, send partner dollars to? And, but have a higher threshold of, you know, RLI on that. Because oftentimes we send, they go, look at how many jobs we have. Well, but how many jobs would you have if you didn't get the money? So I think there needs to be more accountability in terms of how those dollars are used. But again, we should not replicate all these and have twenty-seven different silos doing very, very similar things. And I think that's just a huge mistake and we need to be more, you know, as efficient as possible. I think the one thing in ten years I hate to see, probably another jail pod. And law enforcement will always be a, a, a challenge and concern to make sure we have enough officers out there and we're supporting them properly. Uh, when you look at how much they're being paid compared to uh, other political subdivisions in the area and it's, it's, you know, there's a big difference there and there's a, a big challenge for Sheriff John in that respect. And we need to do as much as we can to make sure that that is supported. But, you know, those are some necessary expenses if, uh, but that, and then continue to balance urban and rural needs, which are drastically different in many cases, uh, whether it's, uh, roads and bridges to, to, uh, snow removal and making sure that those on the, so-called outlining county have, can have their roads open up, county fashion and be strategic in that. And then by ten years, we're probably looking at another, how do we need to redesign, re, you know, reformulate office space? Which is a big thing right now.
Okay. Um, and, uh, no, great, great answers. I, um, the, the big thing too, with any of these challenges where if you see that the VIA can um, assist or provide data, be a resource, be a communicator to industry, um, please let us know as a, as a commissioner, if there's a way for us to get the word out about something or to assist in some way, um, please, please utilize us.
On that note, as you know, we're finally a year away from getting our career in the innovation center. We should have done this ten years ago.
You have to ask the question. And if you, you're actually taking the question I was gonna ask, but you gotta turn it into a question.
It's jeopardy.
Well, yeah. Just filling them in on the facts.
Right.
I can speak and tell us to don't answer the question, just wow. My, my point is we worked, I mean, we've gotten to this point and there was unfortunately a hell of a lot of hurdles to get to this point, but it's coming. And I think when we see it's been, you know, the bar head one opened up. And we've already seen some, some of the feedback from that, the carpentry program's coming. I think it'd be interesting to know. For short, we still haven't brought Kindred into this picture yet, they're not into it. But from the county's standpoint, I don't know what, uh, what you think your role might be in assisting with that. Um, I, I, all I can say is it's been a long, hard battle and we're getting there. And along that same note, when you, from the county's standpoint, we would also get like your opinions, we've been working on trying to get sixteen-year-olds on the job, on the job site. With some rules and regulations. But we've been working on that for many, too many years, um, and we're finally really making some headway now. Um, but if you see that coming up, we would take your assistance anytime with that because that also plays in to the role with the career academy, is getting those kids into some kind of exposure. So biggest thing is, is that when that kid graduates, they can make an intelligent decision on, okay. And you don't really like that electoral, you don't really like to plumb. And I know I can make a good living, but we need that, any of the assistance that the county plays in that would be certainly welcome.
So.
Along with the job situation.
They're, they're twelve million dollars short in terms of finishing the career innovation centers, what John is referring to. And so question is, how can the county play a role in getting this last hurdle? Uh, cause there's a lot of private funding and public funding that have already gotten into it. Um, hopefully it'll be an operation in the fall of twenty-five. And they do need to go to the state legislature, uh, but again, we don't know what the appetite is for that. Especially because it's CAS County, so, um, Keith, could we start with you? And then that, that second piece, um, on students on the job site, we can address that too. They, we'll start with Keith, Tim and then Joel.
So reflecting my teaching experience when I first started. And then the conversations with students was, I always talked about four-year colleges, two-year colleges. You gotta get off, and it was from a partly community, just like the one that I was born and raised in. And when I went to college, it wasn't necessarily the technical things I learned about, you know, coursework. It was the social parts of that, how I grew up in college. And I think a lot of people that went to college in the sixties, seventies, eighties and then. At the end of my teaching career, I didn't do that. I said, okay, colleges become so expensive. I always said, you know, go and try it, encourage, try to. Not anymore because it was so expensive. And I said, know what you're gonna do, don't go and just go to college. And a lot of people then, a lot of students then headed for Wapton, not because of mine, because when he talked about training centers, they are so important in our society today. Because we don't need any four-year, we need plenty of those, but we need people that are going to go right into workforce. We talked about, there was all kinds of good mechanics that, you know, came out of farms, farm shops. They go to Wapton, they're working for implement dealers immediately.
Yeah.
Unbelievable, electricians, apprentice, journeymen, right away, making money. You know, those are the kinds of things that are important to our society, those levels of work.
Yeah.
To make it fulfilling and rewarding, and you're seeing that more, but, but you're talking about it and necessary.
Yeah, thank you. Tim?
Uh, to be clear, you know, the CIC set, you know, NDSCS, the, the county is the largest donor to that.
Yeah.
Fund and I'm not sure that there's capacity to go beyond.
Whatever.
Those that are already paid or donated, and I know there's some funds that have been held and I'm not sure the stats of that pending. Uh, kind of a pro forma, what you doing with it, where, where are we at? Um. Sixteen-year-olds, I'm not sure that there's anything that the county is doing that blocks that. I think that's a state and federal, cause I mean, I just can't think of anything that the county.
We're trying to down, down the.
I mean, again, I'm. Standing near lane and we, I mean, we could do whatever support, but we, I mean, I'm also not a big fan of some political subdivisions that lay in on every issue like this country against that country. Uh, I mentioned Elizabeth when I met with her about, you know, like doing things like, you know, like they have robotics camps that are, there are other camps that can be done uh, with people that give them hands-on. I think we've done a, you wanna call it a good job of blurring the line between high school and college with AP and dual credits and there's money. You know, one of the last things out the door, the base where we put in that you can, you know, if you're a low income, you can get three dual credit courses free and one AP free, you know, for everybody. So some of those programs I think are helpful with that. The thing that's like jaw dropping to me, that really stinks, is every year about seven hundred and fifty kids drop out of high school and they reach the mandatory age of seventeen. So there are currently ten thousand kids in the school system statewide or more that will not finish. And that should worry the heck out of everybody, I mean, ten thousand, that's kind of about.
In wait, annual?
Huh?
What did you say?
No, that, I mean, there's about seven hundred and fifty a year.
Okay.
That drop out, they get to be, you know, they get to be seventeen, that's all that's required by law and they can lease.
Right, yeah.
And so there's seven hundred and fifty that drop out. And if you catch it before that, because many of them are bored.
Right, yeah.
Uh, and that's why they're dropping off, so if you can kind of get them interested, I love it when you have some of those specify. Uh, where, where, you know, you show them hands-on things, they go, I hate math, well, you just did math, you know, but you did it a practical way. And I think that gets exciting, but you think about it, ten thousand students are dropping out that are currently, that will drop out that are currently in K, K twelve.
Yeah, yeah.
That should scare the heck out of every person in the state.
I'll, I'll touch on, after Joel gets to answer the question, just what the VIA is doing to, just to help move the, you know, so.
Uh, really, worst thing we did in schools was get rid of Boag. Uh, it's the end of the day, um, and now we're trying to recreate that in a different manner. And, and I, I'm a huge supporter of those schools, as we've seen success in Bismarck, we've seen where more and plenty of other success, I went down, uh, toured one down in, uh, uh, the Minneapolis area, huge successes. Um, and I'll agree with you, this one, uh, has had its hurdles. I was down last week and met with the president of, uh, Rockside. And, uh, he is very, very concerned about the future of that facility based on what developed. And it was nobody's fault, it just, we, we struggled to find ways to, they're opening a building, it's gonna be a third completed. And then they're gonna start there. Um, and then the other part is that we need to find a way for the, right now, our high schools, our public schools are not as supportive of this project as they should be. And we need to find a way to build that support, cause at the end of the day, it's the right thing to do. And we need to find ways to encourage kids, to find ways, and again, when you're talking about young people, you have to get them early and introduce them to those great ideas and that's where we're really at.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, and, uh, yeah, just as background, the, the VIA, um, we're working through di- different avenues, one to get that sixteen-year-old out on to the job site um, within a, a window of safety rules and some training for the employer, working with public school system and so on, so that's happening and we're hoping to have some sort of program here in the next year, um, before John fully retires that, that's our job. Yeah, yeah. Um, but the other part is the VIA, uh, we actually manage the, I don't know if you're familiar, but if you haven't been to it, the Health Tech Trades Curriculum. That's managed under this team and at the Barrow Dome, four thousand kids, between four thousand, forty-five hundred kids and between fifteen, sixty schools. So that is an introduction to all these different industries. Building industry, critical need for skilled labor. Um, and then, uh, you know, manufacturing, aviation training, uh, medical, that's the health tech trade. So, um, but it's huge because we're catching, it's primarily freshmen, Fargo Public Schools send sophomores. All the other big public schools send the freshmen. Um, we would like to see them send the eighth grade, the middle schoolers who have not quite chosen the path. They're picking, cause they, we can still get them into the carpentry and some of the Boag stuff then, and, and CTE classes. So, um, so anyway, there's that piece, we have the Herdina camp, the two-week camp at M State that we do, that's an introduction. That's sixteen and up as well, um, up to some nineteen-year-olds that are.
Yeah, you could actually, if you're fifteen.
If fifteen, yeah. And they're getting hands-on, um, through experts, uh, direction, so it's, it's super cool. But, so we've got a lot of, um, different avenues where we're working with kids, um, uh, through our Home Builders Care Foundation as well. Um, and we're not giving up, we're doing whatever we can to introduce youth because it is a lucrative career and, and it's a two-year program generally. To start, you can be an entrepreneur and you've got that life skill developed. So if you wanna go to higher ed, you can be, you can do electrician plumber, own your own business or whatever, or go on to get a higher degree, but you can pay for it while you're doing it, so, um.
Did I sound it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good one.
I think if you wait till they're sixteen, you've waited too long.
We're not, we're trying to get everybody else to, so younger.
Because when we pass, there are some laws that were passed related to councilors at school, you know, career advisors. They're starting down at the seventh grade.
Yep.
So that they can kind of prepare, cause you get so many kids that go, I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna, you know, be a pilot. Now you gotta take some math class, sorry kid, but you can't wait till you're a junior, senior and just check the boxes quick, so. Really the earlier you can get them in.
I've been begging the expo committee to look at middle school and to lower that. There are employers though that participate, that we call them the career builders, that build exhibits on the dome floor. Some of them want that freshman or sophomore. So what we've done is the smaller, the other fifty-five schools that come, that are bringing between twenty and seventy-five kids, they can bring from seventh grade to, or excuse me, sixth grade to senior high. So we're getting, we're getting a good amount of younger kids who are in that development part of their thought process too. But yeah, it's been my goal for a long time, but I can't get the expo committee to fight on going younger yet, but we're working on it.
Cause so many families, they ever talk about careers originating at this, well, it's still dying of evil anymore, I think, so.
Yeah, and, and parents, that, um, that's the other piece that, that expo is trying to address this here too.
Up until recently, counselors were our biggest hurdle too. Cause for years, the only route was the four years, you know, after high school was four years.
Yeah.
And, um, it's kind of funny, we talk about starting younger. Bob the Builder, a, a, a program that was started by the National Home Builders Association, I'm trying to think how many years ago that. And that was actually a program, probably started with coloring books or whatever. And I was, and, and I think it started at the kindergarten level.
Yeah.
And, um, so I mean, I, I think um, because we've got it, years, people just have to remember when they, when they're plumber, when their toilet's backed up or somebody's backed up, they realize the, the value of your trades. Or take your car in for service now and you realize that your appointment is sometimes two to three weeks out. I just had my wife's car because the air conditioning wasn't working. And it was three weeks from when I made the appointment out of Luther, they don't have the, they have the people. Um, you know, the RDOs of the world and the Titan machinery of the world, they're the, there's, those are the guys that have the wherewithal to sponsor kids. And if, you know, we've always talked about, you know, if you, if you're a large builder, could you sponsor a kid possibly if he, you know, wanted to go to school? We probably, you know, actually would pay his tuition to, to your school. I mean, my son-in-law is with Titan and he said that program gets them more good people. And they've got, I think, a three-year. And they've got, I think, a three year commitment after they start full time and they get tools, they get, I mean, those are the kind of programs where industry saw a need. Of course, NDSCS built nineteen thousand north, Tim, you were probably part of that back in the day when they came to Fargo. And the reason that whole thing got built up there was to help the, the companies that were coming into North Fargo that needed a certain type of skilled labor. And again, that's the influence we hope to have on the Career Academy, I keep calling it Career, Career and Innovation Center, that the, the curriculum will be constantly changing. It, it will be the old.
Your job ready.
Market driven.
Yeah.
But, you know, and I think it'd be fun at some point to have this career Health Tech and Trades thing possibly hosted, maybe out at, out at the Career Innovation Center.
Well, and I think one of the biggest reasons why, I mean, a lot of people ask why Sanford's invested in Career Academy Morehead, Career Academy here in Cast County, and then also we're investing in something around Ford because a lot of our employees, not only a lot of our medical employees only need a two year degree in many of our fields, but also we employ carpenters, we employ plumbers, we employ welders.
Yeah.
And we need every one of them. And that's, that's the critical part. And, and I think that's where, to come back to the point, we need that public and private partnerships to make these things happen.
Yeah.
And if they don't, we're not going to see a change in what we're having.
Yeah, no, and it's so interesting. We have one question left and then we're going to quickly wrap up. But yeah, yesterday Marvin was here and they said, yeah, Sanford's battling shortage of, of paramedics. Marvin is hiring them away because they need like eighteen paramedics on their.
Because of VOSHA.
Because of VOSHA.
Oh, on their.
They're, they're having more. And, you know, so it's employers battling against one another. So but yeah, so whatever, we know there's limitations and we know that the, the county has truly invested in the Career Innovation Center. And again, tell the BIA, what, you know, what can we do to be a best or partner on some of this stuff? If you find there's a way. Last question, we're going to have Keith go first on this one, then Joel and Tim. How do you see yourself working with municipalities, the other municipalities, like say City of Fargo as a county commissioner?
Well, there's got to be a partnership there. It's an absolute necessity. You have to, limited resources, unlimited wants, the only way to create efficiencies in that. And you partner, you cooperate, you communicate with the other people. Shared resources is the best thing in the world. You learn that very, very young age if you work on a farm is that the neighbor might have to come over and help. And my uncle was constantly coming over to help my dad. Dad was helping my uncle on the farm. That's no different now. This kind of setting is, there has to be cooperation between municipalities, you know, working things out. And I know there can be some things going on, the growth, Horace, Fargo, West Fargo, Harwood, Riley's Acres and all that. You know, you've got to, you've got to realize that we've got a common goal to achieve things with limited resources. Municipalities have to cooperate.
All right, thank you. Joel?
You know, I, I say this a lot, I'm not a politician, but I know a lot of them. And I, you know, just in my background, I've worked with a number of municipalities, not just Fargo, but in a variety of ways. And my work at, at law enforcement certainly taught me collaboration. We worked a ton with a variety of agencies across the state to collaborate, who really bring resources together for a common purpose. I work at Park District, obviously we work with all the political party or political subgroups in our region. And then certainly my, you know, my working with a number of different boards in our communities that allowed me the opportunity to take and, and really figure out, you know, what, it's not just about government. It has to be a public and private partnership across the board in whatever we do. And that includes building coalitions within municipalities, counties, states to really get things done.
Thank you. Tim?
Well, it was been frank, we said, you know, if we don't hang together, we'll show, certainly hang separately. And that's very true with dealing with and working together with the political subdivisions because one of the things we have to do is recognize they have their own unique challenges that are different than the county. What happens with the, the city of Fargo is different, the city of West Fargo is different than Castleton, different than Arthur. And we have to appreciate and respect that as part of what challenges they deal with. And we have to be ultimately be fair. The county can be a convener with all of them because we're of such that we're kind of the big tent in many ways. And we can also be, as I said earlier, a convener of both Cast and Clay County activities. So much of my life has been about collaborations, whether I was putting together the Red Hawks to promote Tri College, University, the partnership between five campuses. And I always teach people, I said, I only have to make five presidents happy. So, you know, that's nothing to that. But I think it's really important, some of my education, I went to Harvard for executive education and creating collaborative solutions. But it's part, you know, it's part about attacking the problem and not the people. And that's where politics has gone so wrong that it comes from somebody in a certain community or it comes from a certain person, that it's a bad idea. And there's good and bad ideas that come from all of us. And you just have to work together to, you know, just attack that problem.
Thank you. Well, we're trying to get you guys out of here as soon as possible. So I'm like, one minute for closing? Okay, so one minute for closing and we'll start with Tim.
Well, I thank you for your time. I always appreciate these conversations throughout the years. My goal today was to learn more about what your challenges are and so I can start ruminating on, you know, what are some of the things that could happen is, you know, some of us say are impossible, you know, don't think, because something hasn't happened for a hundred years that, that one person you may run into, and that's what I like about working with colleges, they don't understand that something is impossible. And I think we have to approach it from that standpoint. We haven't done anything before, but let's not be stuck in the same old rut. We have many challenges ahead of us. One thing that I will give kudos to the county for, they seem to never, you know, make big mistakes or missteps. They are way below their threshold on property tax that they charge, I would point that out. And I think we have to be fiscally responsible, but still provide all of those services. And as I said in the papers I provided for you, that, you know, I really want to make this part, this metro area, this county, the best possible place that you could live in the world. Because anybody can live anywhere and work in a totally another state or country. So let's make this, you know, special in, in all that we offer in terms of great quality of life.
Thank you. Joel?
You know, I, again, thank you for your time and I apologize again for being late. And, and when it comes to this, I don't promise to do anything other than I'm going to work really, really hard to not only get people's vote, but more importantly, to serve them. And, you know, I, in my career, have dealt with some very difficult issues. And I think I approached them in a respectful manner, but more importantly, in a thoughtful manner. And I consider out circumstances and have always worked to find the solutions that I think are right for the, the general public, but more importantly, I think they, they're the right thing to do. So if I receive your endorsement, or more importantly, your vote, I promise that I'll, I'll do everything I can to do that.
Thank you. Keith?
Let's say this before in the forums is that, and enjoy the setting because it's me back to those years of sitting in a social studies classroom and, you know, I have to say that students made me think is that it kept my mind active and a setting like this does the same thing. Is that, you know, listen to things I'm not terribly familiar with, with the concerns of builders and realtors and such, you know, it's part of that lifelong education system. So I think of my candidacy, I'm going to bring an overall aspect into it, born and raised out there in the, in the rural area, but realize the absolute need of coordination between what's happening in the city center as opposed to the horseshoe around there. Is that I bring in a little bit of different idea of understanding, you know, the rural aspect of that, which is necessary in this county at this time.
Thank you. Well, thank you to all of you for being here.